First with the Clarice Jean Hall and then second with the town.
That's what I'm confused, anything?
Yeah. It doesn't do that in the background. Because from the separate.
I got you.
So. That's why. And.
You know.
So.
So. You're stuck to either them or. To the service that will do.
You know.
They're both. That's the point. This is supposed to. So I kept it. Sure. Put out the. Once every, every other week.
Yeah, same.
For land, I've grown a lot of put it out there.
It's a good lot. The thing is full because he forgot to put it out. Two weeks ago, so let's jam it up.
Oh, Dan.
I don't know if we ever got a full set. Came in that email.
I'll move in a second, Dan, I promise. Um. Second version I got was I this.
Yep, brought you that. That's the same.
Here.
There on the other side.
We're over here.
Yeah, the other side of Mir right.
Yes, over here. Yeah, that's Highlands right there.
So the entrance. We haven't. Publish a way till we start. Okay.
You heard that?
I was here in November.
Yeah, the question was. They wanted the entrance over here. If we wanted.
The show. To face.
Yeah, it's based.
So was number three.
There's not enough.
Email.
You know, you'd have to carry. Whatever. So this.
That should be the.
Address this side of the building, make it look.
So.
Kind of like the whole scenario.
Because it wasn't a PDF.
You know, make it look.
Right. But they didn't send anything else into their application.
Which, which I think.
I can, can you save it to your?
On my own IP, I want to Google Earth and we have Google Earth on this too.
Oh, I like your.
Three stars that they have in Georgia.
All these out there.
Something like different.
Know you on the news that night.
One in New Jersey looks close to what.
Going in New Jersey.
Yeah.
Two, those are the two closest to this. Ben, and you can share this one bit.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'll show you. I'll show you.
We'll see. You never know.
This is the, this is the. Tell. Yourself different. Did you? Yeah, if it is. Just give.
Must be the back.
In the back. Yeah, okay. We'll see. Or different in the email you sent. That's why I like that. They can share, right?
They can share, yeah. So at least you have this.
Okay.
Let me open that back. You've got your people, you can share it directly.
Does it pension?
And it's locked. Yeah, it was ready to go.
Okay, thanks, Heather.
Forty. It's going to the floor.
Georgia.
Correct. The email that you sent.
Heather, we're good? So. We're live? Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Heather.
So this is, yeah, it's not there. We were just trying to figure out. It's not on that.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to this workshop meeting of the Town of Henrietta Planning Board on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Members present Matt Borkowski, Patricia Brill, Craig Eckert, Walter List, Robert Barley, and Marcy Reynolds, Town Staff President, Chris Martin, Director of Planning and Engineering, Luke Bushen, Deputy Director of Planning and Engineering, and Dan Mestrela, Planning Board Attorney. Welcome, everybody, and happy holidays, Merry Christmas. First item on the agenda tonight will be the meeting minutes from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Does the board have any comments or concerns with the minutes at all? Should we entertain a motion? So moved. Mr. Barley, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Abstain.
Abstain as well.
Abstains, okay. Thank you. The most, and the opinion of the chair, the motion, the eyes have it, the motion carries, we have our minutes approved, thank you. Okay, next item, application number two-two dash zero-one-eight, Floor and Decor Outlets of America. This is for final site plan approval of a freestanding sixty-five thousand one hundred thirty-six square foot retail store on six point seven four acres at twenty Miracle Mile Drive in Exeter, will be one zone district. Thank you, folks, for coming back. Have you introduce yourself and the floor is yours?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Howard Genislaw from the law firm Gibbons PC, representing Floor and Decor. It's a pleasure to be here in person this time. With me is Julie Starzinski from Floor and Decor. And on Zoom is Matt Cheka from Stonefield Engineering, who had hoped to be here in person but was not feeling well, so he's joining us remotely. When we wrapped up at the last meeting on November fifteenth, we had presented our application, gone through, I think, most of the comments, and there were basically two issues that were unresolved at that point, having to do with the design of the courtyard area between the proposed building and the existing mall, and some concerns about the appearance of the east elevation. So there was some discussion about a conditional approval. Ultimately, the board decided to table the site plan and have us come back so that we could present exactly what those designs would look like, although the board did grant a deck under seeker. So we're here tonight to address those two outstanding issues. After the last meeting, we submitted some initial drawings to Chris and Heather, who circulated them for some informal comment. We made a few further revisions, and then we submitted the drawings that are currently before you. Basically, the courtyard now shows grass and a meandering walkway with benches, picnic tables, and trash receptacles. And the east elevation has been revised to have a lot more presence to it, to add some vertical elements, to break up its appearance, improve the aesthetics, and to provide spandrel, which essentially looks like glass, so it has more of a storefront type of look, even though that's not the main entrance. So you have the drawings before you. We'd be happy to take any questions, or if you'd like to hear them presented in more detail, we're certainly happy to do that, too, but I know you've all seen them, so I don't want to take up your time if you're satisfied with what's in front of you currently. We think they're a big improvement, and we hope that they satisfy your concerns.
No, thank you very much. We appreciate you taking the time to work on this and work with us as a board. I'll start tonight with Mr. Eckert. I know you said you had a question for the applicant.
No, I think we've clarified that. We have the paper copies, the PDF that we had saved for the, what I've considered to be the third application, the third rendition, was not what Heather had in the file electronically, but we have it here in paper. So you don't have that. What's shown as revision three on your notepads is not accurate.
Okay.
Two and three are the same.
Two and three are the same in our, in our system.
Okay, very good.
I don't know. Matt has that available via PDF. If he wants to share it, he can. Otherwise, we have our papers.
Okay, and do you have anything else for the applicant?
Well, no, I mean, so questions at this point?
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
No, I really appreciate the extra attempts in the work. I am. Left elevation east, very happy with the changes, especially like if I'm looking at the bottom left-hand corner, what would be left elevation east with the the additions to the east facade, including the dark banding covering the garage doors, which really helps hide them from that side, so I appreciate that. So the, talking with the architect, and I'm not sure who I emailed and chatted with, the picture that I'm looking at, thanks, Matt, the squares that are there are not actually glass, they're spandrel glass, which would be tinted, right? It would be a dark color.
They would look darker, correct.
So I think you've gone above my expectations and you actually made it look like doors. So actually going to suggest that the bottom layer of that glass be returned to CM or to block, or I don't know if it's EFS, what do we have out there? That I'll see him, you block that's painted.
So it's actually a precast wall, and we're actually applying the windows directly to the precast wall, so we can definitely remove that bottom section.
Makes sense to remove the bottom so it doesn't look like people can go in the door.
Yeah, we could definitely.
You've made it a storefront, and I don't want it to make it look bad, I guess, appealing if people start going into that door. This comment too, and it did ring through. So if that bottom layer, that's my only other comment, is maybe to make that back to just concrete or whatever the panel is instead of the spandrel, that would look great.
Okay.
So that looks great. I love the dark color on the garage doors. That looks really wild. I think you exceeded my expectations there. The courtyard is phenomenal. I really appreciate the work that's going into that. The note here, maybe it's a question for Dan, says temporary area between buildings to be fully designed and permitted by the owner at a later date, but it's on the set of plans. Does that mean it gets approved and therefore needs to be built with this?
Yes and no. It, it does. If they need to revise it, staff will determine if it's a minor revision or a revision that needs to come back to the planning board and so it's, it's good that the wording is there, so it's known that it may be subject to some later change, but staff will definitely.
But it's being permitted with this set of plans.
It is being permitted with this.
So what's?
Yeah, we had actually asked the, to remove that because we were doing, we're doing the meandering path and everything that's shown on the plan. We were trying to make sure that you guys understood that the landlord reserved the right to come back and do his storefront design that he wants to do in that area at a later date. That was a sep, going to be a separate application, so we're not, we're not touching the mall storefront, that's going to be the landlord once.
The sixty, well, the sixty-foot space, so this work that's on the plan is being done as part of this project.
Correct.
Okay, you just, but you're not doing it even to the face of their building.
Correct.
Yes, that, that's.
Correct.
That's not what I was looking for. That's good. I just wanted to see something here versus a dead alley.
Understood, yep. So everything that's on the plan, the meandering path, the benches, the trash receptacles, everything that Howard mentioned is going to be done in this application.
Unless changed and permitted through Chris in the engineering department, as Dan stated, right, which can be altered through him.
Correct.
Okay, good. Okay, they've met the two comments and questions that I had. I don't have any other questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Eckert.
Thank you, sir.
Chair would like to recognize the two members that were absent last month, in case you have any questions or concerns that you'd like to address right now, so I'll start with Mr. Borkowski.
I have no comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. List.
Yeah, who's responsible for the maintenance of the property?
It's going to be.
Is it Wilmot? Will it be Wilmot, your landlord, or will be Floor and Decor?
It's going to be the landlord.
Wilmot? So I just looked at some of the, just in Google Earth, looking at some of your locations, and there's a lot of debris that gathered around, it's a couple, three that I picked out in Georgia had a lot of, what it looked like, you know, garbage or things around the outside. I don't know how old the pictures are, but it didn't look appealing. And I hope that this, this plan that goes between the mall, the little courtyard area, I think takes care of that. I just hope that it's well taken care of.
Understood, and we can make sure that the landlord knows that that was brought up.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure if he's on or here, actually.
And did you address the landscaping issue that was on the, Chris, on your checklist that they were going to use? That they changed and use our plans, our.
Oh, the town plan, yeah, the landscaping details, the tree and their bushes, yes. Well, we haven't received revised plans yet because we hadn't asked for them. We wanted to get through this hurdle first. But yes, once we get those revised plans and we'll check it versus what our comments were. Okay.
And this is just not from Stonefield to, you know, is the civil engineer on the project, you know? We, we reviewed those comments and in regards to landscaping, and we don't have any issues with updating the plans in a matter of fact that the updates are already made. It's just, we formally haven't submitted them yet. Like you mentioned, but you know, we have, we have no issues providing responses to all those comments and revised drawings.
Okay. And how high is that concrete, that proposed concrete wall? That is in front of the trash compactor and trailer loading barrier days.
Matt, do you have that handy?
Yeah, the wall is approximately four feet, but with a small parapet of another six inches or so, so no less than five feet tall.
All right.
And there is landscaping and proposed in front of that, just to break up like the feel of, of, of looking at like a depression. So you're not even going to see the wall for the most part around, you know, standing by the adjacent parking lot and such.
It's all a hit, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. List. The chair will recognize Mr. Barley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. I think everything's been handled.
Very good.
Taking care of everything.
Thank you. The chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
Thank you, and my two comments were exactly what Craig said. I definitely agree with bringing that the bottom up, so it looks like windows and not doors, so that would be absolutely awesome. Check. And then the other thing was the drawings next to the walkway. Define for me finished by the quote-unquote owner versus who is the landlord.
It's one and the same. So that comment, yeah, the owner would be the landlord in this case.
Thank you, because that was confusing to me. Meaning, well, why would they be responsible for the wall of the? So it's landlord. Are you leased? So you're leasing that building? There you go, there's. Thank you so much. I'll say.
Okay, Mrs. Brill, thank you. The chair will recognize Mrs. Reynolds.
Thank you. I have no additional comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. Good work. We appreciate your efforts on this again.
Mr. Brennan, I just want additional comment for Chris, if that's okay.
Yes, Mr. Eckert.
Where are we with the plans? Are we close?
Yeah, so we asked them to hold off submitting anything until it got through this hurdle. And then now that we're through this, we'll get one set of revised plans that we could take a look at and review per our comments and the markups that we had.
Okay, the contractor reached out to me already.
I'm sure they're eager to go, yes.
Okay, so anything I can do to help that, especially since they've come back with a great set of renditions here?
I'm sure they will.
So I just wanted to see where that sat, because I know they're ready to go, and maybe, I don't know if we can talk about giving them a green light to move on to something else. I know they're demoing.
Right.
I got four emails on the demo.
Yeah, I, and I think the, the building plans are ready to go, but so the big thing for us is not only to have the plans revised, but also the letter credit posted. And of course, pre-construction meeting, if that's something you want to have.
Everything's internal. In fact, I think we can just do this with McIntyre.
Okay.
You might suggestion, but we can talk about that later on.
Yeah, most of the drawings have been updated already. We just were holding off until tonight to make sure that we can make any adjustments that you guys requested.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that, and that's why I'm just looking forward to do whatever we can now to accelerate that or to keep you back on schedule.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good question. My, what is your schedule? When would you like to start?
Work.
We're trying to start our foundations the beginning of the year, so right now we have a pretty big section. I think we're halfway done tearing down the old Macy's building. We still have the other half. Obviously, with the holidays, we're a little delayed on things, but we'd like to start at least getting foundations in the first week of January.
Okay.
Macy's is down, yeah. Macy's is down. You probably, longest hurdle, I think, at this point, I'm just going to might be letter of credit.
Yeah, actually, the applicant has submitted a letter of credit to us, which we're reviewing right now.
Yeah, because getting that with the bank might be conflicting with the holidays.
Yeah, so I would try to get that as soon as possible. It's a good comment, Mr. Eckert.
And to confirm, you received everything you needed on that, correct?
Excuse me?
You couldn't, to confirm, you received everything that you needed on the letter credit?
Well, we, we received the letter credit, but we're reviewing it right now.
Understood.
So if we have any changes or revisions, usually there's always a couple.
Yep.
We'll submit it back to electronically and
Okay.
Until, and then I'll write you a letter saying that everything's okay.
Okay.
And then the verbiage that we'll need in the letter credit.
Okay.
So you can, you know, either go to a bank and get a letter credit, or they can post cash.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Yes. Chris, any comments from engineering?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mestrela? Okay, now the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll motion to approve the application.
Second, Mr. Eckert? Mr. Barley had the second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstains? The opinion of the chair, the eyes have it, the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda this evening is just a discussion item. That's the Henry, Historic Site District, the Historic Site Committee. Now is going to present to the planning board information on two proposed historic preservation districts for the town of Henrietta.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some full size maps, if anybody at the plan board would like to see them.
If anybody would like those, Chris, Chris has a map.
I would.
Uh, electronically, right?
Heather, did you get the papers that Heather left for you by any chance? There was some, you did? Okay, good. Okay, floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of board. My name is Gary Goodridge. I'm the chairman of the Henrietta Historic Site Committee, which I've been a member of for about twenty years now.
You go a little closer to the microphone, you have to be really, really sensitive. You got to be close to it. I didn't know where you.
Now I'm going to get really loud?
Potentially. So. The reason we're here.
Gary, I'm sorry, can you spell your last name for the record?
Yes. G O O D R I D G E. Ridge.
And your, your title is?
I'm Chair of the Henrietta Historic Site Committee.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Okay, there's a couple of things we are presenting to you tonight at the request of Supervisor Schultz. Hopefully, you guys have all had a chance to look at all the material I sent to Heather, except for the maps, because obviously you just got those. So. What we're trying to do is we are in the process of trying to create historic districts within the town of Henrietta, and as you mentioned, potentially two. Initially, we are starting with the area in the West Henrietta hamlet, which is what you have maps of. I know a lot of us are old enough to remember when it was called the West Henrietta Village. The state in New York does not recognize that as a village because it does not have its own government. Therefore, they consider it a hamlet, so we've changed our wording around and how we're looking at it because once we get a locally designated historic district there, we are in the process of putting together all the material to get this a state-recognized historic district, which would allow the homeowners there some extra incentives. So. A historic district is a section of the community containing buildings and structures and sites that are designated historically or architecturally significant. And the goal is to preserve not only the buildings, but also the context in which they sit, which is why that map shows such a large area. The map is actually a bit larger than originally when Chris and Craig and Steve and I sat down. Steve had some suggestions, so Chris and I sat down and created what you guys presently have. You should also have received a list of a spreadsheet list. The one with the color on it is the currently designated historic sites within the hamlet and the ones that will be eligible. All right. The one that is blank colored, the white-colored sheet, is the properties that are within the boundaries you see on the map, but they are not considered eligible for historic preservation. The state recognizes what they call contributing and non-contributing properties within a historic district. So even though all of these properties are contiguous, there are some that are in the middle, like the gas station, that are not considered historically significant. Therefore, they will be within the district boundaries, but not a historic structure, if that makes sense.
And why are some green?
I'm sorry.
Yellow, green, currently designated, yellow, shippo eligible.
Okay, shippo is the State Historic Preservation Office. And that was actually my next thing I was getting to, but that's fine. That's fine. That means you looked at it.
Thank you.
So. In nineteen seventy-five, Helen Elam, who was the historian at that time, took the first four buildings, created the first historic district within the town of Henrietta, which was the Cartwright Inn, the Henrietta Baptist Church, St. Mark's Church, and the Lutheran Parsonage, which actually was originally the Lutheran Church before they built the present-day Lutheran Church. And two thousand and two, eleven more properties were added to a district that for some odd reason she decided to change the name to call it instead of the West Henrietta Hamlet, the West Henrietta Village. That was Helen. So. The beginning of this year, the committee applied to the town board, we made a recommendation to the town board to take these eleven properties and the additional four, unfortunately minus the Cartwright Inn, because that's been taken off of the list, and combine them into a district called West Henrietta Hamlet Preservation District. Okay? And when we were starting to do all of this is when some of the meetings with Chris and Supervisor Schultz, and the decision was made to go a bit bigger than originally anticipated and include the list of properties you see here. All right.
Which list was the Cartwright removed from?
The the town of Henrietta has a registry rule of what it calls Henrietta Historic Sites. There's currently ninety-two sites designated within the town of Henrietta. Some of those are cemeteries. We've been able to get some of our historic cemeteries designated now because the the people who were taking care of that no longer did, so therefore it falls back to the town, and once it became the property of the town, if you will, then we were able to make them historic. So. In twenty nineteen, you may all remember Dollar General wanted to come into the West Hamlet. I know Robert was on the town board at that time. And we did a lot of research in that area. Our recommendation was to not allow it along with the seven hundred signatures on petitions from people who were directly involved, living in that area, all saying they did not want the Dollar General. It would have required a presently designated historic site to be broken up. The house next to the Cartwright Inn is also a currently designated historic site, which includes the property all the way up to what used to be Hollerance Funeral Home. All right? So. That was turned down by the town board at that point in time. Once that happened, we stepped up our plan to try to get a historic district in place. Local ordinances, believe it or not, hold more weight than being on the state or national register, which is one of the things we've been trying to get in place. which is one of the things we've been trying to get in place. And if you see from the list, there's quite a number of houses that we are feeling are eligible. Current town code is set up such that in order to become a historic site, the owner of the property at that point in time has to voluntarily submit an application to become a designated site. When that happens, the designation, the application comes to us on the Historic Site Committee. We have a whole review process, much like yours, we have to go through. We make a formal recommendation to the town board, written recommendation to the town board. The town board reviews it, and then they decide whether that particular property should be deemed a designated historic site. Alright, so that's sort of the process as it works now. When this all came up originally with discussions with Steve, he said, okay, as we move forward with this, there are gonna be co- town codes that are gonna be involved in this, which you have a list of the proposed codes. He asked our committee to put together, based on recommendations both from the state and from other current, the Landmark Society and other current historic districts within the state, what types of codes they were looking at. From that, Tyler and I created the list that you have a copy of. Alright, so we resubmitted that back to Steve. Steve's looked at all this, and his suggestion was that we present this to the planning board, because obviously you do the planning for Henrietta, as a discussion item to get your feeling on the codes and thoughts on the district. At the moment, East Henrietta, we are looking at a district in East Henrietta, but as you all know, a lot of the buildings there have already been taken down and destroyed. Most of the ones within that map are still original. I mean, we have a hundred-plus-year-old houses, including the Cartwright that's within that. Um, we're sort of hoping that the new potential buyer for that decides to go put it back on the list.
Are you saying there is a new potential buyer on?
Rumor has it that there's been something put forth to buy the Cartwright. I can't say definitively.
But can Steve comment on that?
Oh, he can talk about it.
So, a couple, a couple of things, um, to directly answer your question, the, the owners of the Cartwright came to the town board and asked it to be removed from the registry and the town, a previous town board permitted it. So I'm not happy with that decision, but they, they made that decision. So that's why the inn is no longer on the registry, even though it once was, and you're hard pressed to find more historic properties than like that and pizza corner and the church at that corner. I mean, they're, they're just some of the oldest buildings in town, so. Um, yes, uh, I've been working with a developer in town. Um, he has a, an accepted offer for Cartwrights. It's been going through, uh, an, um, engineering study, a phase-one environmental study, and a hazardous material study. Um, I haven't touched base with them in a week or two, so I don't know where we're at. I believe the engineering came back, probably came back that it is sound, it is structurally sound. Uh, if you, which doesn't surprise me, it's post and beam, they're like twelve-inch square um, posts, so it's, it's rock solid. It doesn't mean the whole face, it doesn't have to come down and be redone, and the, the add-on sections, the, the kitchens to the east, those all need to go away. Those are all in horrible condition and the, we don't have a formal plan yet, but the initial discussion is we're essentially, we're gonna remove all those kitchens. We're gonna essentially tear the building down to close to its original form, uh, re-site it in, um, whether it's actual mater- exact same material it will at least look like. So, for instance, we might use the cementous board, like hardy board, uh, just to, for easier upkeep, but it will be all historic. It'll be historically accurate, even if it's potentially some newer bu- building materials to help with the preservation, so. And obviously, any work we would do with that would be through with the Historic Site Committee. Our plan would be to register it. Whether we do that before or after the rebuild is to be determined. And some might say, well, you should wait till it's all done because of Article Nine or Article Ten stuff, except that we're potentially going after a significant fund. In fact, I just earmarked some stuff that came from the governor's office today, talking about some other uh, grants that were received for the restoration of the, I'll call them like cornerstone historic properties. Um, so there was a long list of them, and a couple of them were like perfect matches for the uh, Cartwrights Inn, so, um, the, this developer and I intend to go after that same grant, but we can't until we actually own the property, so.
Great news.
Yeah, so it's not been made public yet. The sale isn't a, in other words, the sale was contingent on those things, so it's not a hundred percent final, but that's where we're at. Um, we've just, you know, haven't been talking about it a whole lot.
Steve, if it is passed and it is prot- therefore protected and um, very specific requirements about, you know, windows and siding and all this other stuff, are you able to tear down, and I don't mean you, I mean we, whatever,
Right.
that the kitchens and the things that are in bad shape and that, and the, um, the preservation would only, um, preserve the old portion of the building itself?
Yeah, so, you know, in terms of Article Ten protections, or is it nine? It's a nine or ten? It is ten, okay. Article Ten protections, it applies to the whole property. Um, however, if we went to the Historic Site Committee and said, we're gonna remove those nonhistoric kitchens, they'd, they'd applaud us, so. Uh, there would probably be a new kitchen added on. The plan is, right now, they run, um, those kitchens run east to west. Uh, we would probably do it north-south, so it's parallel. We'd do it sort of like a shed dormer right off of the, it'd be stone-on slab, so there's no basement. If you're, oh, how many people are familiar with the inn, but what got them their health code violation, the floor in the one kitchen was, it rotted through and vermin was coming up through the floor, so. Um, the basement is in rough shape. We've got some ideas, um, in fact, some places, the, the basement wall's crumbling, but the wall, believe it or not, it's not really structural, because again, it's a post and beam. It's the foundations for those posts. We will probably fill in the basement, that this is all, this is just our current thinking, to be determined based on better when we get the full output from the engineering report, but we're probably gonna shore up the footers of those posts, um, just because some of the posts have been underwater for years, so we don't know how rotted they are below the water level, so ideas, encase them, um, and then fill the basement up to, to get rid of the issue, and like I said, the other ones we would move. And the other advantage of turning the kitchen parallel to the building is we would then be able to have an exit out of the parking lot, onto Erie Station Road at the far western side of the property. So anybody who wants to go northbound on fifteen, instead of having to turn left out of the parking lot, goes, turns right onto Lehigh, or excuse me, Erie Station, and then turns left at the intersection, so.
And I can see that being a right, right exit only. I'm thinking based on the angle that that is up to.
Probably, that, ultimately, that's up to, well, I guess it would be up, I don't know, it's, it's a state road, but it's in limbo of trading, the state route no longer goes that way, but uh, whichever, you know, I haven't really looked at that, and some of that will also depend on the setback of that of the kitchen. If, if we can avoid having to extend the full length so that there's at least better sightlines as I'm pulling out of that parking lot, um, but if we can't, like you said, we'd make it right only, uh, so that no one's pulling out in front of the, the.
I hear you say new kitchen, so, sounds like a possibility of a new restaurant.
That's the plan, is it would be a restaurant, possibly a microbrewery.
Oh, cool.
That's what we would love, but.
The only contingency is that they have to find the recipe for the old clam chowder.
We've, 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 we've got it. It's already covered.
Serious?
One of the, one of the old cooks, uh, kept the recipe, so.
I literally used to drive home where I worked, I'd go to West Henrietta, come up there, and I'd get like a quart of it to bring home for dinner. It was so.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, so there's a couple potential folks who have some interest in terms, there was a microbrewery, in fact, it was the one that was gonna go over ni- near the Beers of the World, um. They, two things happened in that one, that, I don't know if you've heard, that, that's hasn't, isn't moving forward, because one of the, two things happened. The bottle recyclers were giving, didn't really wanna move. Uh, they'd only move if they would have a new building built, which was gonna increase the cost to put the microbrewery in. At the same time, the microbrewers lost their partner, who was the chef, who was gonna run the restaurant. Um, so, but there's a couple others that we've been talking to, so we've got a couple possibilities, but obviously, until we get, that's, that's a year or two down the road, because I will tell you, it's gonna take a lot of work.
Um, that's exciting.
The big issue with that was, you know, one of the kids who owned it was from, believe it was in California, and had an unrealistic expectation of what the property value is worth. The problem they kept saying is, you know, it was like half a million is what it was listed at. Half a million, that's what that corner lot's worth. We're like, yeah, if it was empty and ready to build, but, you know, anyone who buys it, the cost to knock down that building, which I would have hated, or to restore that building, you can't afford to do that on top of the half million, so we're not looking at it, um, as a moneymaker, we'd love to break even. Um, obviously, we'd love to make money, but it's more of a passion. The developer, when he started his company, his very first holiday picnic for, or holiday dinner for his company was at Cartwrights. So, we were able to play up the sentimental, uh, angle and and so, like I said, it's, it's gonna be interesting. We'll see what happens. What's that?
Is it J N?
J N.
Initials, the builder, no, okay.
So. Well, like I said, I suspect it will, the Cartwrights will be preserved somehow. Like, one of the breweries was talking about, I don't remember what they were gonna call their brewery, but it was the Brewery at the Cartwrights Inn. Because one of the things, as I've talked to these folks, I said, you want free press? Bring back the Cartwrights Inn. That will make the newspaper, that'll make television, that'll, so. We'll see what happens. So that's the goal.
Highlights will explode.
Oh, I know. We'll probably also take down some of the addition to the south. Um, and we're going to try to as best we can. Unfortunately, the imagery, the photos we have of it isn't the best, but we're gonna try to restore some of the original look patio, although we might make it bigger so that you can have outdoor seating under the patio, so.
And is the real estate itself separated from that apartment building?
Uh, the purchase offer is for both. The apartment building most likely would be converted to the offices for this other individual's business.
That is exciting.
Yeah, it's currently two parcels. That was one of the other things, where they put the dividing line, the, there was hardly any parking for the inn. It was ridiculous, so. So the offer currently isn't for both parcels and fingers crossed it all continue to move forward.
Right, good news.
Very cool.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So obviously, the other part of this is the proposed code list that you guys have. We were, we as the committee were looking for potential recommendations, any thought you might have. Um, we did put a lot of thought into this, and it's been gone over by a few people. But Steve wanted to go to the planning board with this al- also, because as I stated, you are the planning board for Henrietta, and as we move forward, that West Hamlet is a pretty good chunk of West Henrietta Road along that thoroughfare.
Right, and so like, you know, we're just looking at things for like, in terms of, and I, I've only briefly looked at the code, I haven't really dug into it yet, but like, do we look into things like, um, you know, what kind of effects can you have in there on plans on architectural review, that type of stuff, because that's some of the things that we're looking at. Um, we've got the developer who's looking to build a factory for, um, solar panels um, on the old, well, on the western half of the, uh, former Delphi property. Um, he is committed to creating a historically, uh,
Looking?
Right.
Better term?
Historically consistent, uh, front facade. Um, so, um, but it would be nice to essentially be able to require that, because, um, you know, like Gary said, unfortunately, the East Hamlet ha- carries very little of its former character, whereas the West Hamlet has almost all of it. Um, and we'd like to preserve that, so. We're open for ideas on, you know, we don't wanna tie the planning board's hands, but I don't mind tying as much as we can, tie some of the developers' hands that they have to meet the requirements for, you know, in that architectural view, that basically, if it isn't deemed to be a fit, um, that it doesn't go through. Now, one of the things that my thought is, and, and again, I didn't double-check the code to see where it's at, was that similar to what we do for the Article Ten, uh, he- hearings for the town board, that if one of these came in, they would submit the site plans to the Historic Site Committee, who could make recommendations back to the planning board, so you'd have their expertise when making your decision on whether it, it meets the motif, so to speak.
Right, and that is within the proposed, because we have current town codes under Article Ten, which basically states any changes, modifications, whatever, to a currently designated Henrietta site, historic site. And the building department has been very good about this. When an application comes in and Becky set it up, that it actually pops up a red flag on the computer and says, hey, this is a designated site. So it immediately gets sent to us, and then we meet with the developers, we do the review, we make suggestions, and we've had very good luck in the past with this. Um, and then, once we, as a committee, get together and vote, we do a formal recommendation to the town board. Um, and then they vote whether to approve our recommendations or not. And like I said, we've had some really good luck with this in the past.
And so the idea would be, I'd want that to apply to any new development within that district, whether it's a historic site or not.
Steve, would this require, like, some kind of more stringent portion or section of the code?
I suspect it would. That's one of the things that Don and Dan are probably gonna have a few conversations as to what's the best way to implement that, because obviously, we need to do it within the framework of, uh, you know, the, the, the state laws with regards to planning and zoning and stuff like that, but
Yeah.
I do know that they have some capability. We just have never done it, but I know, like, you know, Victor, for instance, is very strict about the architectural styles within their villages and uh, four corners, and there's other areas that are like that, so we just have never done it in Henrietta.
Well, a- as a member of this board for many years now, that's always been one of the things that our hands have been tied, is we really can make suggestions about the aesthetics, but we really don't have any teeth.
Right.
So, it seems to me like that would have to be some kind of, you said, you were, you were saying this covered under Section Ten or something like that, so maybe.
Whether it's, Article Ten is for historic properties, whether it, it's there or under the, I forgot what article is, planning board. It would go in one of those two.
Okay.
Um, but yes, it would have, it would basically give the planning board essentially that they couldn't do a site plan or a, an architectural rendering without your approval. You'd have, it would give you that teeth, but like I said, I wouldn't wanna restrict the planning board as much as I'd want to empower them to, to basically say, hey, that's gonna clash with the historical motif of the district.
Okay, thanks.
I think this is a great idea. Um. How many members were on your, 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 uh, your board?
Seven.
Yep.
Do you have regular meetings?
Once a month, unless something else comes up, and then we have emergency meetings.
Are they open to the public?
Oh, yes.
And where are they?
Downstairs. It used to be right here, but you guys took over the same night.
Sorry.
So we're in downstairs meeting room. The, typically, the first Tuesday of the month. Um, we've tried to set it up where we were before town board workshops, so anything that we came up with, we could submit on Friday, so that Becky put it in the town board workshop. It went to them, and then it could be on the next town board, potentially on the next town board agenda. Pardon? Oh, sorry, first Monday. Today's Tuesday. Thank you, Tyler.
Now, the chair will open up the, uh, open it up to the board for any conversation. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I do.
Sure, Mr. Barley?
Um, I have a few questions. How was, how was it removed, the, the designation, and what was the process for it being removed from the building?
Oh, you mean?
That's under Article, that's under Article Ten. You basically have to petition the town. That's under article, that's under article 10. You basically have to petition the town board and the town board has to pass it by resolution.
Right. It came, it came to us and they sent us the letter and they were. It was under at the time a hardship.
Yeah.
It was listed as a hardship because they were trying to sell. And because theoretically, because it was historically designated, they were having a hard time. But actually, if you go to the state and not just our state, but you look around and you talk to realtors. Having a historical designation frequently is a plus. It's not a negative. But at that point in time, they had two properties that were on the list. And the cart rights was in a little poorer shape. Um, they actually applied to have both removed.
Okay.
Um, and at the time, um, the current historian Tina in our committee, we all sat down. And because of the estate and the hardship, we said, okay, we'll do a compromise. Um, and removed cart rights. And then we made that recommendation and like Steve said, that was prior to him. That was prior to town boards. Um, that did that. None of us really wanted to do it, but. It seemed the thing to do for the estate. So that's how that happened, but there is an application for that within article 10.
Okay, understood. In establishing the hamlet, what are the major benefits for the residents in the area?
I, I'm sorry?
What, in establishing the new hamlet? What are the major benefits for the residents in that area?
Well. There is presently, and we just did a new one, uh, last week, some additional historic incentives. And Steve's actually working on more. Historical incentives for that, so that if somebody becomes designated, there is the potential for some of these incentives. If we can get the district. National and state registry, then there are grants available, especially to commercial developments. Um, I can't quote what's going to happen next year because that hasn't been published yet, but in the past. Commercial developments actually got. Money off from their state and federal taxes. And there's grants available, which is one of the things Steve was just talking about. Um, for designated historical sites. So that's an advantage.
Gotcha.
Robert, I, I don't know. It's, it's been a while, but if you remember when we did the. Comprehensive land use, uh, plan update. Um, we added incentive zoning and one of those. Districts is historic property. So it, the district technically covers the whole town, but only applies to. Historic properties within the town. So it's things like, um, you know, so for instance, if someone was going to fix up. And, and it's typically, it's tied to someone who's going to restore. And maintain a historic property, especially one that's falling into some disrepair. Um, it, it enables them to do things like, um. Get, you know, potentially a greater density if it's a, if they're, if it's a big old house and they're turning it into a multifamily, it, um. It, it, uh, there's some additional complimentary uses that they can have, um. Depending on what zoning district they're in, um, our code also. They don't, it waves the requirement to have a paved driveway. They still have to pave the portion, the apron that's in the, um. Right away, but beyond that, it can remain stone. Cause again, that's more consistent with the age of some of these properties. Um, so there's a bunch of advantages like that. The one that bothers me that the state doesn't do, and I think we all ought to start a. Letter writing campaign to, uh, the Albany is that there should be an exemption. On property taxes. You know, a partial exemption, call it 10%, whatever, something that's eligible for historic properties because. You know, the thing that always. You know, when we've been looking at this, we always look at these types of incentives or the other stuff in the code. We're asking people either in historic properties to essentially preserve a portion of the town history.
Right.
And there's an additional cost to that because they're more expensive to maintain. Um, or like in the rural residential district, we're asking people. To preserve some of our open space through lower density and stuff like that. And that has a, whereas there isn't a direct cost. To doing that, there's an indirect, there's a opportunity loss because. They can't turn around and sell it and to a developer who can put, you know, uh. Four units per acre on, on the property. So, um, in my opinion, those people ought to be. For lack of a better way to put it, compensated for what they're doing for the town. And that's the part that always drove me crazy that. Real property tax law doesn't allow you to take that stuff.
Well, that's exactly why I asked that question. There should be, you know, because when you have a designated property as an owner, as a private owner. There's a cost to that.
There is.
And you can't update your property like anybody else can. And so I was hoping that there'd be something here for the residents that they would be able to get. To kind of help with those costs, upgrade their properties in a way that.
There is.
Historic.
Right. There is, it's limited to what we can and can't do. And we've. You know, like I said, the complimentary uses is kind of a new one. And then example of where that one's coming into play. There's a historic house that's currently owned by a church. The church was going to knock it down. Someone wanted to come in and restore it and maintain it. Um, but the, we're to recoup those costs to do that, selling it as a single family home. He's not going to make the money. He's going to lose out big time. Whereas if he can. Restore it and operate it as a duplex or a triplex for rental property. He, he's willing to do that, but of course it's in an R115 zone. So that's not allowed use, which goes back to this. Compliment, uh, this incentive zoning that if he. Commits to restoring it and putting it on the registry. Then he could potentially get approval from the town board to operate it as a duplex or a triplex, depending on where his plan something. So. Those are the kinds of ideas, but like I said, to me, there should be an ongoing thing with your property tax. Unfortunately, that's governed by real property tax law. So Albany has to change that.
And my last thing is thanks, Steve, is, uh, this will be going back before the town board for discussion or also.
Uh, there'll be a public hearing. You know, one, once we're ready to. You know, I wanted to get feedback from a bunch of groups, um. And then basically what we would do is we would craft the final law. Like I said, I expect. Um, for the, the sections on the planning for the planning board, I expect Don to reach out to Dan as well, but, um. Once we have the finished local law, we would then call for a public hearing, hold the public hearings and then, uh.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate that. I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
The past, the past comprehensive plans, if you go back and look at them all, and I don't have that with me tonight. But, um. All the questions that were asked of people in the West Henrietta Hamlet area. They were all very large numbers stating, I mean, you're talking 80 to 90% of the people questioned. Of preserving that area.
Yeah, that's true.
So, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is in with our committee. Obviously we look at preservation. But we're also smart enough to realize that. It's very expensive and in a lot of cases, in fact, um, two meetings ago, we had a window company come in. Because a house historic designated, the headmaster's house in the Eastern Henrietta Hamlet was looking at doing new windows. So they came in and presented different window styles that are deemed by, by both the state and the landmark society locally. As. Historically significant. In other words, you can replace an old, old window with this new and get all the new, you know. Better seal, better insulation.
They build them to look.
Exactly.
Just like the old historic windows.
Right. And that's what in the, in the code, when you guys go through that, but that's one of the things we look at as a committee, like Steve was saying. That potential, um, solar panel. He's already talking with the developers and hopefully if that comes closer to fruition, we'll be talking with the developers. But there are materials out there that look the same historically, but they're new material.
Right. So were the windows accepted by a historic committee?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and.
And passed by an article.
And, and passed by the town board by an article 10 hearing.
Okay.
Um, so the owners are currently moving forward with, unfortunately, due to whatever the. Order of the windows has been put off a little bit. They ordered them, but the manufacturer can't supply them.
Supply chain issues.
Supply chain issues, yes. So, um.
Anyway.
For the explanation, Gary. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Burkowski, did you have any questions, sir?
I'm good. I think it's a, it's a cool thing. It's exciting. There's a lot to be done still.
Mm-hmm.
So let's see how it moves forward, but I kind of like the idea of having some teeth on these things. So we're not. Your hands are, are tied on multiple levels, even you guys.
Right.
Right. And one of the things we've been doing, because it's going to be required by the state, but it'll also be helpful to us. Is we are doing individual research on every property that's on that list that says eligible or current. Um, and we're, we're tracing it back as far as we possibly can to see the whole list of owners going back. Um, obviously if you go back far enough, Cornelius VI owned everything here, that and the Indians, but, um. That way we'll have a history on each of the individual houses. And that's what we're in the process and there's 42 houses. So it takes a little bit of time. But we do have quite a few of them done.
Very good.
Very cool. When I, uh, several years ago, I was a Girl Scout leader and we did a project for a badge and it was. Um, based on the Henrietta historic homes and we worked with Helen. And her book and we did before. And current photos and told stories about them. And, you know, they printed out their own little book. I wonder if I could dig that up. I'd love.
You'll see my name in the beginning of that book because I did all the pictures for that book. I didn't take them, but I went through all the. I volunteered with Helen for quite a few years. Um, and I went through all the archives and found the pictures and then I dealt with the company. Um, believe it or not, it's kind of a challenge. They all have to be a certain size and a certain, you know, density, but, um.
Such a fun project to do though, to take the current pictures and kind of teach the kids before and after and. You know, the reason of the historic, and I live over here by the way, so that's why my ears are furrowed because, um.
I don't know if the board is aware, but, um. The Henrietta Historical Society has a Facebook page. And in addition to that, I've set up a historic, um. At the time it was called the West Village and the East Village, and I'm going to be going back through now because thank you, New York State. Um, and changing those names to the Hamlet, but on those pages, you're going to find quite a few pictures. Um, the, the historian's office had. A gentleman who went through and took a ton of pictures in the forties. And then there was a bunch of them that were in the early 1900s is where we got some of the Cartwright pictures from. Um, and they're on that site if you want to take a look. Anyway, that's a little off the side of the subject, but.
So wonderful sight.
Oh, yes, I see you frequently on it. Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds, any, any comments?
No, my, my one question was about the reference materials for the pictures and the buildings and you've already answered.
Right. And just so you know, I didn't mention it when we were all looking at the map. That map is based on. Historical maps we have from the 1850s, um, 1850, 1852, 1872, 1888. Unfortunately, they weren't done every year. Um, 1902 is in the supervisor's office here, but we based. That on all of those historical maps and. The Rochester Library has historical tax records for Henrietta that go all the way back to 1818. There's a few missing years in there, but once we get names off the maps, then we start doing the tax rolls going back and that way you can see. You know, this person owned a hundred acres and then two years later they only owned 50. So now you know, you got to look and find out where it was sold to. But that's part of the research we do. We're, we're trying to be as thorough as we can using actual physical records.
Very interesting.
That's great.
Thank you. Very cool.
Mr. List?
Yeah. No, my comment was, uh, involved the, what, you know, financial incentives for. For rehabilitating your home or that, and we kind of addressed that. But, uh, do you have a lot of participation from the people in the yellow? In your meetings? Have you met a lot of resistance to?
We, we have had neither at the moment. Um. And just so you know, there's a gentleman in the audience, his house was recently put on the national and state register. Of historic houses. Um, there are people within the Hamlet. Um, the chases have come forth. We have letters created to, uh, both current homeowners. That are designated and the eligible ones on the list. But. When we first started doing this, we had decided that we needed to have some code in place because you know, somebody's going to ask the question. I send this letter out saying your house is eligible to become part of this. Hamlet district and this is what it means. You know, they're going to call up and say, okay. They want to know what the town code is and I understand that. I would also. So those letters have been put on hold until we get more of these things taken care of.
Yeah, we want to have basically the. As close to the final, obviously during the public hearing, some stuff may come out, we may change the code, but it's going to be whatever we're going to put forth. It, you know, for the public hearings to say this is what it's going to be. And what we'll do is then. That will go out with the letter to each in property owner within the district itself. Um, as well as the normal, uh, publication we do for, for both.
Right. That's the plan.
Gary, so how long would it take if we, if we designate this district locally here? And how long might it take for the, uh?
Like, are they already built?
No. For the state and, and the other, um, districts to be formed. Or approved, I guess.
The East Hamlet's been put on hold at the moment until we can get this one in place. Once we get one in place, because the codes that you're going to look at are going to apply to both districts. Um, only got so much manpower and time. So since the state came in and said. They feel the West Hamlet, and they gave me the list, which you guys have. Of the houses they feel should be within it. We feel there's other ones that should be also, but I've already talked to Virginia Bartosz a few times about this. Um. The national registry applications, each one has to be done individually by the actual homeowner at the moment. If we get a locally designated district, then some of the rules change. Um, unfortunately, we're almost to the end of the year. And I know in January and February last year, we had a plan in place and then they changed their requirements. So I'm kind of waiting until. After the new year to see if they change things. So to answer your question, I wish I could give you a timeline for that part of it, but it's New York State.
Understood.
I don't think I have to explain that part of it.
I will say that, you know, the town engineering team has been very responsive and helpful in creating, like creating that map, creating the. District and especially because as anything like this go, you know, goes through multiple iterations. You know, we say, oh, well, you know, shift the line here, do the line there. So Jeremy especially has been exceedingly helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been getting help from any of the departments. I mean, I've dealt with Captain Wilson and Chris quite a bit. Um, we're trying to move it forward.
Sure. Yep. Well, thank you. Mrs. Bro, anything else?
Nothing else. I'm so excited. I'm going to, I am a member of that as well.
Oh, are you? Good.
Yeah, and, uh. I will keep my eyes even more open than it's been and I'll be on the lookout for any of those meetings I can attend. I'm very excited. Um, I just remember it, remember going there, eating there, you know, and.
Yep.
Seeing its demise over the years and the bulge inhabiting the rooftops and.
Now you've got a new park right across the road.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, that turned out beautiful too.
So one of the things I'll say, like I said, don't go shouting from the rooftops about the new Cartwrights yet.
No, can't do that.
It's official. I'll let everybody know.
Yep.
Understood.
But, uh.
That's why I wasn't commenting.
Yeah.
Well said. Yeah, no, appreciate all your hard work you've put into this and obviously so many others, um.
Right.
And I just Googled it and I, I see another friend of mine is actually on the board as well. So that's interesting. So I'm very excited. What's the comment?
Mr. Record?
Any comments, sir?
No further comments, sir. Thank you. Okay. Well, Gary, I think we're all set. Thank you for your time tonight and for this presentation. This is, this is exciting.
The one thing I'll just add as a side comment, one of the things we also did is we reached out to the Seneca Nation. To ask them for a list of sites within Henrietta that they deem to be historic. Cause our plan is we're going to declare some historic sites. Uh, with regards to the Seneca Nation. Now whether they're on the registry or not will be up to the individual current property owners.
Right.
Um, but they'll at least be. Marked with a sign and we're going to do some recognition, but you know, I wanted it to be ones that the Seneca Nation picked. Not that ones we picked, right? To me, it should be their choices to what's historic to them. And for the reasons and, you know, so, um, I've reached out to, and I can never remember his name. It's Peter Jemison's. One of Peter Jemison's sons. I was, I met him at a county planning. And then Gary reached out to the historian?
Um, yeah, actually I've reached out to the chief of the Seneca Nation, um, and been speaking quite a bit with his, um. She's listed as an admin, but she's more than that. She does most of the things for Roger Hill, Chief Roger Hill, sorry. And, um, Dr. And Dr. Joseph Stallman, who is the director of the Iroquois Seneca Museum. Obviously, November, which is when Steve first rolled this to me, was a very busy time for them. So he's, Dr. Stallman has contacted me twice since then, and he said, okay, now I have an idea of what you're looking at. We're going to get back together with this in January. And everybody I've spoken to from the Seneca Nation is very excited about this whole thing.
And then the other thing I suggested is that they choose the time that we announce this and do this. So again, I don't want to pick a time that we deem to be critical, you know, like we could pick the date of the signing of the Canandaigua Treaty. Well, that's significant to us, but like if they have a particular date that they celebrate the the forming of the Iroquois Confederacy or some important date in Seneca Nation history, that I want them to choose it. So the idea is we'll have a celebration at that point, we'll unveil the new markers, we'll, you know. But
Nice.
We're not just looking at, I'll call it white man's history. We're also looking at.
Great.
Yeah, the 1918 map that shows the indigenous people trails and villages through the county, but I've done a blow up of Henrietta. And the new Riverwalk Trail actually follows one of their trails along the river. So.
Interesting.
That's just a potential. I've sent all this information to Dr. Stallman and.
There's a couple that are on the RIP campus and on some town owned land, so I figure at least if nowhere else, we're going to have some stuff there.
Yeah.
Great.
Did you grow up in town?
I'm sorry.
Did you grow up here?
Well, I was born in Andover, which is Allegheny County, down near Wellsville, if anybody's familiar with that, is the other side of Alfred.
Great area.
And and yes. Yes. Actually, one of my ancestors was the first surveyor there in Alfred. He's the one that set up all the selling of all the plots. Anyway. My dad was a industrial electrician or a local 86 electrician. He got sent to Buffalo. We moved to Buffalo and then people that he'd been working with called him and said, you got to come to Rochester. This place called Delco is great. They pay us really well and you don't have to do as much as we do now. So my grandparents lived here in Henrietta. And we came here, lived in Chi-Lite for a little bit, and 62, I came to Henrietta. So I'm a graduate of Fresh Henrietta. I went to school at MCC and RAT and but.
It's nice to meet you in person.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for all you do. That's terrific.
So he's lived in Henrietta as long as I've been born.
That's my year too, 62.
So I I say yes. I said the answer to that is yes. You did grow up here. It's longer than I've been born, that's for sure.
Okay, well, thank you very much and thank you for sharing this this project.
Thank you. Yes, any suggestions, obviously. If the easiest, you email me or kick into Becky and she sends everything to me.
Okay.
We're just really interested in what your thoughts are on the code. It sounds like everybody's pretty positive about the actual idea of this.
Yes.
It's just some of the particulars to get it set up so that we can roll it out in a public hearing to the people and see what they think.
And when we're done with that, the other thing too, is if the if the planning board feels that for outside this area, we want a little bit more architectural view. Now, again, I don't want to become a victor. But if if there's other stuff that we need a little bit more teeth on, don't hesitate to make a recommendation. And again, you know, we can, we can work that out and figure out what that needs to be because I don't disagree with you. You know, it's, you know, one of the things that I was talking about, like I was at a event with a lot of Rush people, and one of the things we were talking about is for some people, a lot of people in Rush, being like Henrietta is, they consider it an insult. You know, when you really get down to it, the areas that are problematic are some of those you know, older commercial areas where they're what I refer to as the seas of asphalt. Right? And I would love more teeth, more ability to require to get in these green lawns and the islands and the stuff to start to break up that look. You know, with that said, I laugh at them because like three of my neighbors are horse farms, yet I'm five minutes from shopping Mecca. So it's, I love Henrietta. I don't know why. It's an insult, but
I'm the same way.
It is. You know, it's just, I think they're silly, but that's okay.
I'm not too far from you. I have two acres. I'm out the country, but two minutes to.
Yeah. Yeah, it's great. So.
Yeah, so when people, you know, bash Henrietta, I'm like.
The problem is they're they're driving on Jefferson Road or West Henrietta.
That's right.
The car.
It's like when when Sheriff Baxter first came to office, he was going around to the towns and he wanted to be taken into a part of he basically said, I want to see a typical neighborhood and I want to see a neighborhood that people don't realizes in Henrietta. So I took him into some of the areas north of here. So that's, I've considered this area up here, some of our typical neighborhoods. Then I, for instance, took him over on a shore drive. And he was blown away. He's like, this is, I didn't know you guys had this in Henrietta, you know, and and, you know, as I was driving home the other night, coming back, you know, whether it's Erie Station or Lehigh Station Road, you get out into the rural area in the southern, it's it's gorgeous. I I just don't. I don't know. I don't get it. Like the other thing, I'll tell you, growing up as a kid, I want to be in those suburban neighborhoods where it's house on house and sidewalk and cul-de-sacs.
Pissing the stream.
You could play in the street, you know, game on, game off. So.
When the streetlights come on, you go home.
That's right. That's what it was.
We didn't have streetlights.
Yeah. Yeah, streetlights and yeah, same thing when the streetlights came on, you had to be home.
Gary, when would you like comments from the planning board members by? Is there a drop or a drop dead date? I don't have a drop dead date because the dates in the past have all seemed to get moved. Not that it makes a lot of difference, but we actually started this with Peter Manati to show you how far back we go. Actually, officially, it started in 1979 with Helen because this was one of her goals. And obviously I worked with her for years. So sooner rather than later, but I know you guys have a lot of things going on.
So I would say if you get them, you know, mid to late January, by then that'd be great. I'm just looking at for our, yeah.
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, they're looking for additional.
For more than we just talked about?
Well.
If if you just look over the packet to see, you know, like I said, if you've got ideas that you know, especially folks have been on the board a while and know, you know, where you're frustrated because, boy, we would have liked to force a developer to do this, but we couldn't. Right? Those kinds of things. If if it's not, you don't see it in there, say, you know, and whether you do or don't see it in there, feel free to make the comment that this is, you know, if you've got an idea of what you'd like to see to be able to protect this as a planning board, what do I need? What what teeth do I need? Just let us know. So we can make sure that it's in there.
Right. That's why I gave you the whole list of what we were proposing for codes. We were trying to think of anything we could think of. A lot of it has to do with new construction. And at this point in time, the West Hamlet and the East Hamlet don't have a lot of open land. Unless stuff starts to get subdivided and broken up and whatnot, which is one of the things we're trying to forestall.
Right.
So if you look through the list of codes and you say, okay, this is a good idea, but I'm not sure about this and make a suggestion on that, that's the type of things I'm looking for.
Okay.
And we can revise it and present it. And then the board can do the next step.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Makes sense.
Great.
Thank you. You guys have a good holiday.
You too. Yeah, Christmas happy holidays, Gary. Okay, most intuitive, Mr. Brilliant. Seven seventeen. Chris, any comments about the next, the meeting at all?
We have three items on the January meeting. One is a co-locator for a cell tower. The second one is Starbucks, the old P3 and Uno on Highland Drive. They're going to divide that in two, and the north side is going to be a Starbucks. So they have a drive through that they have planned for that. And the third one escapes me.
The third one is what?
The third item on the planning board for the next January meeting. I'm not sure.
It's an escape room.
Read somewhere. Oh, that would be fun. Team building event.
There we go.
Did I read somewhere that that Starbucks is going to be 24 hours or was it?
That's a good question.
So I'll add in that I got a call from Marcia Green Greenwood from the DNC asking me that exact question. And it's not like it's tucked next to a residential house where the drive through is going to have a conflict or
Yeah.
Wegmans isn't open 24 anymore, right? Or that Highland?
No.
I don't know if any of them stayed open at 24 after COVID.
I don't think they did.
It never went back.
Never opened back. So but Wegmans was.
Right.
I knew I read it somewhere. Yeah.
I honestly didn't remember. I remember there being some communication about the drive through. I just don't recall there.
I just. I had to ask him where his property is because I don't see. Good. Well, Merry Christmas, everybody. Good year, yeah. We'll see everybody, everybody next year.
We're done.
Thank you, Steve.